And then, public service announcements.
No.
And I also have none. We have four minutes to kill. So, do we have any old business or new business?
Nope.
Charlie, anything?
I would like to thank you all for coming in and just, we did have such short notice because of the fact that the primary is next week. And while we can have this type of a meeting, we are discouraged from having anything of critical importance the night of the statewide primary. So that's why we had to do the special. So I thank you guys, you all, for coming in, because any later than this really would have been a crunch on.
Get those tax bills out.
Thank you very much. That's why the weird last minute, we need to do this kind of.
Yeah, we really, we thought it was going to be the third until that came up.
When we realized we hit the primary, it was like, everything.
Normally, Mary would remind everybody to vote.
Oh, that's right. Early voting is in progress.
Actually, Jamie, we do have Lafayette visit coming. That should be quite an event.
Yeah, so folks home, that, Charlie, wanted to say it into the microphone for the people in the.
Oh, sure. We have the Lafayette visit commemoration and reenactment next Tuesday.
In what time?
I think it starts at 6:00.
Okay.
Coming up, Charlton Street, right down in the public house.
No, it's exciting.
Can we still attend that? Or is it closed?
I don't know. I'll check. Terry's right there. I'll hold him. But I think you may be able to still attend. I think there were still tickets available, but it hits with the board meeting.
Oh, okay.
The dinner, that dinner is something separate in the public house later on. So the big pot is all over the public.
For that, you could, the reception, you definitely could have had.
Reception, I can't. Okay. I'll talk to Terry.
So we have about a minute. The, I guess actually this is a good opportunity, just thanking Annie Racioli for her work. And just, is that position posted today?
Is it being posted tomorrow? I think tomorrow morning. I had planned on at the last meeting thanking Annie publicly. She came to me. She's sort of making some major life changes, positive things, all positive for her. We will miss her tremendously. I have had, she's a pleasure to work with. She's taken on everything I've asked of her, and I've asked a lot of her, all sorts of different teams that she has stepped up and taken charge. She did a phenomenal job at the farmer's market, taking that on concerts, the New York trips. So we did post the position. We will be taking applications for several weeks. I spoke with Katie, and it's officially their hire, but he has asked me to lead the search team. And he will also be on the committee with me, as well as, I believe, Leslie and Heather. So I want sort of a social services representative in Leslie and Heather, because more and more, Annie has worked closely with Heather on projects like the ADA compliance, learning how to do procurement for major projects and whatnot. So that will sort of be the hiring team.
Great.
And Annie is staying on through September. There was some buzz that she was leaving like immediately. That's not the case. She is going to work with us on transition.
That's great.
And the recreational director also oversees the summer program at the rec, which is a big undertaking. Hiring lifeguards and instructors, tennis and whatnot.
Huge responsibility for a lot of children.
Well attended.
Considering I held her when she was my daughter's age.
That is speaking of women. Imagine how the rest of us feel in her room.
Another group of children I had to babysit. No, we wish her nothing but the best, and she's been a delight, and she's.
She really has been. She's just a breath of life.
Yeah, and her family's.
Some of us older crotchety people.
Okay, so I think we are at 6:35. So we have to call the meeting, I think. You want to do that, Mary? I don't think we have a public notice with us.
No, it's.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we begin a public hearing at 6:35 PM, a joint meeting with the Board of Assessors to allocate the local property tax levy amount for the classes of real property and personal property for fiscal year 2025.
Do we have a second? Are you all those in favor?
Are you officially open? Did you officially open your meeting?
Oh, yeah, we opened and closed.
Oh, okay. So you're official.
Okay. All right.
Okay. So, all right. So here we are together to discuss the fiscal year 2025 classification hearing and the tax options that will be before the select board. The purpose of the classification hearing is to consider the tax rate options that are available to the town of Sturbridge under the property tax classification. We received final certification of our values last week, so that opens the door for us to get this done tonight. We are not here to decide a tax rate, and we're not here to determine how much money can be raised. It just determines the distribution of the taxes. And the tax rate in this presentation is proposed. We have not received certification from Department of Revenue. We haven't submitted yet, but it is as close to the tax rate as we think it's going to be. So property assessment review. Why do we change assessed values? Well, one of the reasons is Department of Revenue requires it. Under Mass General laws, we're required to assess properties at 100% of full and fair cash value. What does that mean? It means the values must reflect the market, what the properties are selling for. The DOR reviews our data every year. They call them interim year adjustments, and every five years, they do a revaluation. This year, fiscal '25 is one of those revaluation years. Department of Revenue actually comes out to the town. They do field reviews of our sales. They do field review of our land values, our land curves. They get a little bit more involved in what's happening in the town of Sturbridge. If our values are not within the 10% of fair market value, we would not be approved. If our values don't get approved, we don't get a tax rate. This is a copy of the LA4 form that we submit to Gateway. So it shows you all the property types that we have. We have five classes: residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property. Throughout this hearing, I'm going to use the word SIP or the acronym SIP. It's commercial, industrial, and personal property. That's that group of, that class of taxes, as opposed to residential. Okay? And this gives you the breakdown. As you can see, our total, our total town value is $2,444,395,154. I wanted to give you a history of the average single-family value in Sturbridge. So this is the last 10 years. And as you can see, steady increases going along. And then when we hit that 2021 year, that was the year COVID hit, when everything kind of came to a standstill. And you can see after COVID, when everything opened back up, the values of single-family homes just started to increase. And not just in Sturbridge, but just to give you an idea of what's going on out there. This is our levy allocation as it stands with a single tax rate. As you can see, the residential class bears the lion's share, 84.89%, and the SIP class has that small little orange piece, 15.11%. So we're going to vote on a SIP factor tonight. So the SIP factor is where the select board decides whether we're going to have a single rate or whether we're going to adopt a split rate. There's 351 Massachusetts cities and towns. 119 of them have a higher SIP value than Sturbridge. The higher the value, the easier it is to do a split tax rate. 108 cities and towns in Massachusetts had a split tax rate for fiscal 2024. 101 of those had higher SIP values than Sturbridge. Normally, it's about a 30%, 30% SIP value that makes it feasible to do that split tax rate. We're at 15%. Usually, if you try to do a split rate, which we have done in the past, it puts the burden onto that smaller group of businesses, which a lot of the businesses in town pay two taxes already. They pay a residential tax and they pay a personal property tax. So to shift that burden just puts a little bit more onto them. The impact of a split tax rate. It would reduce the taxes for residential and open space, and it increases the taxes for the SIP properties. We have 4,233 residential open space properties and 808 commercial, industrial, personal properties. Again, residential factor one is a single rate. Anything lower is a split rate. If you went with the highest 150% shift, it would increase the SIP rate by $7.97 per thousand and reduce the residential rate by $1.42 per thousand. So with a residential and commercial property value of $482,802, a single tax rate of $1,595 would then change to $1,453. They would see a savings in taxes of $684.72, while the commercial properties' tax rate would go up to $2392, and they would see an increase of $3,843.13. Now we have to vote on an open space discount. Currently, all of our open space is in chapter land. The board can vote up to a 25% shift. If adopted, it's only in the residential class. It does not affect the SIP class. So it means a higher residential tax rate would happen if we decided to give an open space discount. Again, they're all classified under chapter land, which is assessed at either 25% of the fair market value or lower. Every year, we get a report from the Farmland Value Council. They give us the values of an acre of land for whatever product they happen to be in. So forestry gets their rate, all the agricultural ones, corn, hay, pasture, we get the rates per acre. And then the Chapter 61B, the recreational, they just get assessed at 25% of what the full value would have been. Currently, a 20-acre parcel is valued at, say, $71,900. It would have a value of $5,433 in Chapter 61A, and they'd be saving just over $1,000 in taxes. Next is the residential discount. So this is where there's an option to shift the tax burden within the residential class. Some properties would pay less in taxes, other properties would pay more in taxes. What would be the impact? If you go with a 35% exemption, $146,169 would be amount that could be deducted from a qualified With the tax rate of $1,595, if we go with a 35% exemption, that would increase the residential tax rate to $2173, keeping the SIP tax rate at $1,595. And this would mean a qualified property assessed at the $482,200 would see a decrease of $389 in taxes, and a non-qualified property of the same value would see an increase of $2,787 in taxes. Shifting points. By adopting the residential exemption, 3,153 properties would see a decrease and 959 properties would see an increase. But because the increase and the decrease is based on each individual property value, not everyone's going to see that $600 decrease, and not everybody's going to see that $2,800 increase. It's going to go based on their value. Some are going to see more of an increase, some people will see less of a decrease. And keep in mind that the Sturbridge Retirement Co-op always is greatly impacted by this option. Their taxes would, I had it there.
Greatly impacted in a negative way.
In a negative way. They would qualify.
People watching.
Right. They would qualify, but their taxes with a 35%, their taxes would increase $25,723. If you went a little lower, like a 15%, they would still see an increase of taxes of $10,426. That's even with, they get the discount, but it's still because of their value. They don't see a credit. And then we have the small commercial exemption. So there's several items that they have to have in order to qualify for that. It's only the commercial properties that are eligible, so the industrial properties and the personal property tax are not eligible for this exemption. The property must be occupied by the business as of January 1 of 2024, but it does not have to be owner-occupied. It has to have no more than 10 employees at the locations during the previous calendar years, and they have to have a valuation of less than $1 million. And if the property has multiple commercial occupants, like we have some of those little strip sections there where you have four or five businesses together, all of them have to be eligible in order to get the discount. If there's one there that doesn't qualify, the property doesn't qualify. And if you apply that, about 41 businesses out of the list that we get from the Department of Labor and Workforce would qualify for that, out of 226 businesses. The total valuation of the 41 that would qualify is $22,45,001. The 10% shift would increase the tax rate by 14 cents. And for an example, a qualified commercial property assessed at $900,000 would see a decrease of just over $1,300 in taxes, and a non-qualified would see an increase of $126 in taxes. So the impact of that would be that only the commercial properties can qualify, but the industrial class would share the burden. It's the owner of the property, not the business, that gets the credit. Commercial properties account for 9.97% of the levy, and the industrial properties account for 2% of the levy. And any sole proprietorship or partnership that doesn't appear on that list that we get from the Department of Labor could apply directly to the assessor's office. And based on that, at our meeting this evening, the board voted to recommend you vote to adopt a single tax rate, vote not to adopt the open space discount, not to adopt a residential exemption, and vote not to adopt the small commercial exemption. If any of you have questions?
Just if you could, for the people at home, just give a very brief summary of why these are all the recommendations.
Well, we have found over the years that the single tax rate is the best thing for Sturbridge, only because of the SIP percentage that we have. To shift that burden onto them, we would foresee that we would lose businesses, not gain any businesses. It might prevent other businesses from coming here, because, oh, well, Charlton doesn't have a split rate, so we'll go there instead of paying a higher rate in taxes in Sturbridge. So it could actually negatively impact the residential properties by going with the split rate, because you could end up losing more of that percentage on the SIP. And now, all of a sudden, maybe go from 15% to 10% of SIP, and now the residential is carrying 90% of the tax burden.
And if I could jump in on that, one of the other hidden losses there is 18% of our revenue is local receipts, restaurant hotels.
That's right, too.
So if, in that process, we were to lose small businesses that were restaurants, not only do you lose that tax revenue, you also lose the restaurant meals tax that that generates as well. So it's not just losing the business, it's losing what also comes.
Right.
With that, particularly on the local receipts.
So it's a combination of us being largely a residential town, the nature of the businesses that we have versus a community like, say, Burlington, Massachusetts, which has all these big companies but a very small population.
Exactly.
So, all right, great. Anything from the board?
No, no questions?
I don't really have a question, but just for viewers, it might be good to explain what you set out in the beginning in bold, how we don't set the tax rate. Because what I try to explain to residents when they get their tax bill, they go, "Mary, I'm tax-free." And I try to explain, we have to pay for the budget that we approved at town meeting and all the other expenses. And then your house gets assessed, because it has to, by the DOR, and the rate kind of sets itself based upon what we have to pay for. So maybe you could just explain it in a more technical way, but that's what I try to tell people.
Yeah, it's almost like what you just said, that the process of getting to this point, the first part of it is setting the budget. That's where it starts, okay? The budget has to get set. And I know that, I know all the departments in town, we work hard at trying to keep our budgets as concise as possible, you know? And then it goes to town meeting, okay? Now, at town meeting, because I had it here, yeah, we have 7,571 registered voters. 158 voters went to town meeting. Those are the people who voted on the budget. They're the ones that voted what that budget amount was going to be. Now you got your budget set. Now the next step is the values get set. We don't look at the budget when we're setting values. And the values is strictly based on what's happening in the market. Where do we have to be? We have to be within 10% of fair market value, 90 and 110%. As long as we can get our values, and like I said, with the sales that have been taking place, that's tough, sometimes getting it within that range. We get that into the range, we submit that to the Department of Revenue, they have to certify those values. They're looking at the same sales we're looking at. They're running it through their macros the same way we're running through ours. So they're verifying that we're doing our job. Part of that, setting the values too, is those cyclical inspections that we do, okay? We do 500 cyclical inspections every year. We have to do the whole town within 10 years. So we broke it down, you know, we figure 500 a year, we can manage that 10-year cycle. The more properties that we can get into and verify the data, the more accurate our information is, which makes our values more accurate. If we're not getting in and we're not, we don't have good data, when the sales start taking place, well, the sales are going to be up here, and, well, why is the value way down here? Oh, well, because there's a finished basement, because there's an extra bathroom. You know, so the more properties we can get into, the better our data is, the better our increases or decreases in values happen. It's not these big spikes. So that's the second step. So set the budget, then the values get set. Now we do the classification hearing. You, board, you're going to decide, are we doing a single or split tax rate? Then we have to also look at, so once we do this, we're also inputting all this information into the Gateway, which is all of our local receipts, so the cherry sheets that we get from the state. We have to figure out, here's the budget from the town meeting, the money that we get from outside sources, meals and revenue tax, marijuana tax, cherry sheets. Then we're left with what the town's left to raise, the tax levy. Okay, that's now a math formula. It's, here's the values, here's the town levy. What does the tax rate have to be to equal that levy? That's how your tax rate gets set. It's not that, oh, well, they set the budget this high, so they had to raise the values, and that's how they got the tax rate. They're two separate things. The budget is set at town meeting, the values are set out on the market.
It's based on, and Anne and I have talked about this, it's based on the prior year's budget. Sometimes I think people think this is set first, and then we say, oh, we got all this money, so we're going to raise next year's budget. It's based on what was already voted. And people have to remember, we have a 2.5% levy cap to begin with. So we don't have some arbitrary number that we can just continue to raise budgets and raise taxes. It's the unfortunate nature, or fortunate nature, of property values going up, depending on where you're at in life, if that's fortunate for you or unfortunate. And then what I think, and I want to commend Anne and the board, because we came through a reval year, and the public has huge questions on that, understandably so. And for people whose values went up, what really is important isn't how much you went up, but how much you went up in relation to the median increase. Because if the median increase, for sake of argument, went up 8%, and you went up 8%, proportionally, your taxes will be adjusted, and your difference is somewhat negligible. But if you went up 12%, and another area went up 4%, you'll see a difference. And so I think that balancing act is also very confusing for people. It really is a complicated formula. And I want to thank Anne. She does a great job of trying to explain to the public, particularly when they come in, one-on-one.
The values, so the values went up about, on an average, about 10% to 12%, but the lake values went up.
That's what I was going to ask you to comment on. Because I know a few years ago, because I have a cape, for example, and I don't know, maybe three or four years ago, capes went up more than Colonials or ranches. So that had to be explained to me, because even I, as an elected official, I was like, I was like, oh, I guess capes are popular. So I was just wondering, for people watching, what percentage-wise, what type of real estate went up the most? I know you just said lake houses.
And it's not so much the lake house, it's the lake land values that went up. Because, so for example, we had a sale, well, this is a 2024 sale, which we'll be looking at next year, but just to tell you what the market is doing. We had it assessed at $496,000. It sold for $1 million. Okay? That's not within 10%. The new value for fiscal '25, based on the 23 sales, is $600,000. So now, when we look at that sale next year, it's going to be, the sale price was 600, or, I'm sorry, the assessed value is $600,000, the sale price is $1 million. You extract the value of the building from the sale price, you're left with the value of the land. That's how land values get assessed, when we look at the sales. So they're telling us, if the house was worth $80,000, and they pay $500,000 for the property, well, they're not paying $500,000 for that $80,000 camp. Chances are, they're going to knock the camp down and build a house. So they just told us that that land was worth $420,000 to them. That's how all of that has to be looked at. We have to break all of that down when we're looking at the sales, to say, well, why did this property sell for this amount of money? You could have two identical houses built by the same builder, one in one section of town and one in the other. Well, that same house sold for $150,000 more in this neighborhood than it did in that neighborhood. That's where the neighborhood factor comes in. Some neighborhoods get a higher selling price because of where they are located. That means their land values are going to be a little bit higher than what the land values were in the other neighborhood, where it's just selling for the regular price. There's a lot of different things that go in. We have to look at the age of the house. Is age impacting the sales? Do we see that the older houses are selling for less, staying longer on the market? Or are they selling just as well as everybody else? You know? And then, like you said, styles. Some years, capes are, everybody wants a cape, or everybody wants a ranch, so they're willing to pay that little bit more. Like I said, the last three years, the sales have been crazy. I've never, in my 22 years of doing this, saw NLS listings with, "Give us your best price by Friday." You know? That's a strong market, because people are, there's a lot more people wanting to buy than there are houses on the market. So they can command that type of.
Well, the combination of COVID, the reduction around 2008 after the housing bubble, and easier Massachusetts exploding in costs, has created dramatic increases, and it's going to give us, frankly, whiplash for the foreseeable future. So I guess, I think it's fair to say that the position of the Board of Assessors is leave Mary alone, she didn't do it.
To all my friends out there.
Right. So the people to complain to would be the ones who are buying the property, selling the crazy money.
Yelling at neighbor who bought the house $1 million.
And, you know, talk to the 158 people who went to town meeting and voted, who took the time out of their schedule to go for one night a year and vote on the budget.
But I also want to comment on that, because the budget was, even though there's only 150 people that attend, you know, they, all our priorities are different, so.
Right.
I mean, I really, no judgment calls. Through our town administrator, we try to do a very good job in not making the budget, this crazy budget. I mean, Finance Committee looks at it, we look at it, all the individual departments look at it. So even though there's not a lot of people at town meeting, it's not as though the budget has a lot of excess fat on it, if you will.
But I think if more people went to town meeting, they would understand, exactly. They would understand it, and they would see it, maybe feel, like I always say to people, when they come to my office and they complain about their values, I try to take the time and go through their card with them, see if there's something wrong on the card. If there's nothing wrong on the card, then I explain how we set the values. And I always say to them at the end, I say, "I know it doesn't..." And I always say to them at the end, I say, I know it doesn't help you pay your taxes, but at least if you understand the process, at least you might feel that it's fair.
Yeah.
You know, that they can get that.
It's also better to have a high value with a lower rate.
Because you got more equity.
Than a, you know, low value where you're taxing the heck out of it.
Taxes are going to be the same.
Went up.
Right.
You know, the values went up is actually a positive when you own your property.
Yeah.
So, anyway.
Oh, right. So, um, with that, any other sort of substance here?
I just want to thank, again, Anna and the board.
Yeah, we appreciate you guys.
This year was tough.
Uh, all right, well, this is a public hearing. Charlie.
Thank you very much.
What was the tax rate last year?
Tax rate last year was sixteen forty-nine.
That's another.
And it's ni- uh, fifteen ninety-five this year. So it came down almost fifty cents. Yeah, you know, um, which is good, you know? Actually, I think it was like fifty-three cents or something it came down, yeah.
Yeah, no.
So anytime we can get the tax rate to come down. And that's usually what happens, value goes up, usually the tax rate comes down. Because also we had the, um, you know, a couple more debt exclusions on the, on the thing too this year, which impacted our tax, tax.
And I've said this before, but I think we're going to have a meeting where we talk about our, the guidelines for how much.
We are in draft form.
We have had some free cash offset the tax rate in the last several years. We haven't done that.
Yeah.
But for at least ten years that I was on the board, we did do it. So I don't know why, I mean, maybe we can't do it anymore, but I want to at least relook at that.
Sure. All right, um, so with that, I think we're looking for.
Motion.
Four motions, um, one on the single ta- tax rate, one on the open space discount, one on the residential exemption, uh, and one on the commercial ex- small commercial exemption. Um, so going to single tax rate, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we vote to adopt a single tax rate.
Second.
Great, all those in favor? Excellent, the ayes have it. Um, on the open space discount. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we vote not to adopt the open space discount.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. Uh, residential exemption.
I make a motion to not adopt the residential exemption.
Do we have a second? All those in favor? Great. And then lastly, the small commercial, small commercial exemption.
Hey, I make a motion to vote not to adopt the small commercial exemption.
Okay.
Go ahead. Second.
Great, all those in favor? Great.
Trying to make it easy for Michelle.
I know. So with that, thank you, guys, so much for all the work. We know it's, uh.
Absolutely.
No, there's nothing more fun than assessing, but.
It's, it's.
In the box of.
Yeah, sorry.
I've been doing this for twenty-two years, so there must be something about it. I like it, I'm a people person, it's kind of a strange.
You like the people come in?
I, I, you know, it's, it's a strange, um, field to be in when you're a people person, but, you know.
But in, in a way, it's not, because I have to say, Anna, the public does come in.
Oh, yeah, they're going anywhere.
Personality is so critical to.
Yep.
I just try to treat them like I'd want somebody to treat my mom or dad.
Yeah.
It's their own, like, it's their own tax dollar every day.
Exactly, yeah. And I always tell people, you have the right to come in and question your, your, your assessment. I mean, I, I'm quite happy to talk to anybody about their assessment.
Public service out of Anna's department is, is tremendous.
I guess just next to it.
Michelle, I can't get this to shut down.
Great.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Bye, bye, bye.
Have a good night, God bless. Thanks, guys.
Anna, do you want this?
Yes, I need that.
Perfecto. All right, with that, um, I think we're at a motion to adjourn unless anybody has anything else.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Great, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you all, appreciate you coming.
Saying off, of course, appreciate.